I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, May the 5th, 2014. Want to welcome everyone. Very glad to have with us tonight Dr. Steve Kimmel, Smyrna First Baptist Church, 1275 Church Street. He was right there. He will come forward this time and give our invocation. So would everyone please, and the place of flag.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just take one minute. As Dale and I are leaving at the end of the month, moving to Florida, I just want to take one moment just to say what a privilege it's been to serve with you and with our council and all the many people who are so devoted to our community and making this community a safe place and a welcoming place, a fine place to raise our children, as my children have grown up in Smyrna and will always think of, call Smyrna their home. And I thank you for that privilege. Let's pray now. Our Father, we pause right now to remember your faithfulness to us. We know you are good and gracious, God, and we thank you for that. We're so grateful, Father, that you've chosen to favor us by allowing us to live and to live at this time, to live in this place, and to live with these neighbors. We're grateful for that. And we pray, Father, that you'll continue to smile upon our community. Help us to make this into a place that's pleasing in your sight, that's nurturing of our children and always honors the things that are right and pleasing in your sight. Help us to make our community a warm and welcoming place, a good place for us to be able to call home. I thank you for these public servants of ours and for the dedication they've contributed to this community to help make this place the kind of community it is. And I pray that you will continue to bless them with good judgment and with personal integrity as they serve us. We remember the families, the many families of our community spread all over, all kinds of families in all kinds of circumstances with all kinds of needs, but who are all together seeking the very best community to live in and place to raise their children. We pray your blessing on the people of our community, and thank you for smiling upon Smyrna, Georgia. We pray your blessing on this gathering tonight and any and all decisions we make, that they'll be pleasing in your sight, and we ask it in Jesus' name. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, if you'd just stand right there. Y'all can have a seat, except for Steve. And I don't...
Yeah.
Your wife told you that you were leaving?
Yeah.
And I know we can probably, I don't know whether the camera's on. We have a proclamation for Steve, and I just want to say this, that Steve has really meant a lot to our community, and he is the, I say this all the time, this sort of joke, but it's not. He's the reason why I don't ever jog. They can hear me. But I'll use the microphone. Steve, come over here. They just want to interrupt me. Anyway, he's the reason why I don't jog, because I'd see him in the neighborhood running around, and I'd be going, "Boy, that guy looks like he's having a rough time." And it was, you were sort of struggling. But the expression has never changed. But Steve has just meant so much to me personally, and I'm not even a Baptist, I'm a Methodist. But he has been here so many times just to give the invocation, and whenever we need him, he's there, and he's just been so much to our community. And I got a proclamation by the Mayor of Smyrna in recognition of Pastor Steve Kimmel. And he came from New Orleans, that's where you're from originally. Whereas Dr. Stephen L. Kimmel has faithfully served, the Lord administered to the people of the First Baptist Church of Smyrna as senior pastor for more than 22 years. Somebody said 40, didn't they? Maybe it just seems like 40, but 22 years. He has prepared and delivered more than 2,000 sermons, led countless Bible studies, and baptized and discipled hundreds of new and growing believer. Whereas Pastor Kimmel led First Baptist Church of Smyrna with a dual focus of financial responsibility and vision for the future, balancing growth and improvements for the church, and his programs with the need to reach out to the community, the region, and the world. And whereas Pastor Kimmel has led with conviction, vision, and courage, serving as a change agent when needed. Examples of his leadership include the creation of the First Baptist Church of Smyrna Leadership Team, church renovations to better serve members and the community, collaborations with the city of Smyrna, the creation of multiple worship services to reach more people for the Lord, upward sports, faith, and action, partnership with other churches, and emphasis on missions and building and leading an outstanding church staff. And whereas he has been Pastor Steve in the church and in the community, leading parents and dedicating themselves to raise their children and the growth and admiration of the Lord, leading the lost to Christ, marrying couples, and ministering to those who have lost loved ones. And whereas Pastor Kimmel has faithfully modeled godly leadership as a husband and a father, cherishing his wife and best friend Dale. She here? She left? Loving and guiding his son Josh and daughter Corinne, and now their spouses Christina and Josh. Whereas Pastor Kimmel has served with humor and energy, using puns to make a point in a sermon, running and playing with young people and breaking his arm, performing an underwater marriage ceremony in scuba gear, participating in youth mission trips, continuously trying to better his time in the Johnquill jog, serving hot dogs at upwards events, and realizing that singing is not his spiritual gift. Whereas Pastor Kimmel works tirelessly and seeks God's guidance in all that he does. He has served as a spiritual leader in the church and in the community, engaging with businesses, government, and community leaders to work for a greater goal. Now therefore, I, Max Bacon, Mayor of City of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim, whatever, this is a different date, just don't worry about that, data recognized Pastor Steve Kimmel. Steve, I can tell you that, you know, I don't tell people I love them very much, but I love this guy, and I'll give you a Chicago bear hug in just a minute. But he's done so much for our community and really not gotten the recognition that he really deserves. So you know what you can get with this proclamation? Just congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good job, Pastor. You. Thank you. Came close to getting the mayor's award for all the things he'd done. We have, I think Mike Brown is here, but we're here to present a commendation to Communication Officer Tammy Morcal for walking Joshua Hendrix and Virginia Hendrix through the birth of their baby girl, Abigail. I think I heard her out there talking earlier. Ron Fennel is sponsoring this, and Ron, I'm gonna turn it over to you, and I think they're out there somewhere.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of council. Thank you for allowing us to be here this evening to recognize one of our 911 operators, Tammy Morcal, for a really extraordinary event that occurred back on April 22nd of this year. And I'm gonna let Captain Bennett come in just a minute, and he's gonna tell you exactly what happened. It is quite extraordinary. Before we do that, I'd like to take just a minute to thank all of our 911 operators. They do a great job every day, and under difficult circumstances, and rarely do they get to go out and eat a regular meal. They come to work and they work for the full time that they're here, and we appreciate everything they do. They are a great group of professionals, and so often their work goes unrecognized. So we're very thankful for them and really recognize all of them for the hard work that they do every day. Captain Bennett, come on up and explain what took place on April 22nd.
Is that the actual baby?
Yes, sir.
Get out of here.
It is.
Look at that.
Yeah. And again, like Deputy Chief Brown said, thank you guys for the opportunity to be here tonight. And preface my story, this is Ms. Virginia Hendrix, baby Abigail Nicole Hendrix, and Communications Officer Tammy Morcal. And again, it was two weeks ago tomorrow, which was a birthday that my wife and I share also, so it had a little special meaning. I walked into the dispatch center when I came into work, and everyone was kind of staring at me funny and giving me odd looks. So I started checking my attire and be sure everything was in line. And I said something, and one of them told me to be quiet about the same time that Tammy was given the instructions on how to tie the cord off, and I was like, hmm, I understand now. But again, it was around 8:00 in the morning when Virginia's husband, Josh, called our 911 center, and according to Josh, they were on Ridge Road trying to make it to the doctor's office. Tammy Morcal, who's been with us often on for a number of years, took the phone call, and Josh explained to Tammy that his wife was in labor and was having a baby on the side of Ridge Road. Going back and listening to the 911 call, we could hear Virginia in the background, and we could hear Josh and Tammy conversing very calmly. On the other end of the phone, Tammy was heard maintaining a very calm demeanor and walking Josh through the birth of the baby. And the result of this chance encounter between the two of them is the birth of Abigail Nicole. And I would like to publicly commend Mr. and Mrs. Hendrix and as well as Tammy Morcal and her outstanding performance of her duties on April 22nd, 2014. And with that, we have a certificate of recognition for Tammy, and I'll read it. It says, "The City of Smyrna Police 911 Emergency Communications Center recognizes Tammy Morcal for her invaluable support and efforts on April 22nd, 2014, at 8:06 a.m. in the delivery of a newborn baby girl."
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And again, I want to congratulate the Hendrix on the birth of a healthy baby girl.
Where's Joshua at? Yeah.
We'll see if I can grab him.
Yeah, I want to know what he was, what all the...
It was truly amazing how calm Tammy was and Josh, and how they went through it. And I tell you, if you haven't heard the tape, the most amazing thing is as you hear them going through the process and exactly what they do, and then you hear the baby cry. It's great.
So Joshua, so you were taking your wife to the doctor?
Yes.
And so what was...
And we made the decision to go to the hospital. Then we pulled over.
Grab, grab.
No.
I assumed that you were a little early?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
But we were at home.
Oh, were you? Well, good deal. Congratulations, you got a beautiful baby.
Yes.
Looks like you, Joshua.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank y'all so much, and thank you so much for the job that you never get thanked for, I guess, so thank you.
We do get praise.
Yeah, good deal. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Awesome job.
Appreciate it, man. JRM Management is here for a check presentation to Smyrna Education Foundation. Terry Nolowich, I don't know if you're gonna handle it or who's gonna do it. Would really prefer to have cash.
It's good.
But we'll take what we can get, so I know this is...
If I could just say a couple words. I'm Bill Watson with JRM Management Services, Mayor and Council. We've been very, very proud to partner with the city in providing quality events for, I think it's been over 12 years now, the Spring and Fall Johnquill Festivals, Taste of Smyrna, which we revived with a concert a few years back, and real excited about coming off, I think, the largest Johnquill festival we've ever had. We estimated almost 30,000 people on two beautiful days. Got a little rain right at the end there, but it kind of made everybody go home, so that was great. One thing at JRM, we believe in is community, and to be part of a community, you need to invest in that community. And we provide a nonprofit section at all the Johnquill festivals where civic groups can gain awareness and raise funds and things of that nature. The library actually, at this last Johnquill Festival, raised almost $2,000 selling old books for about a buck apiece, which is pretty neat. We've also supported the Campbell High School Foundation Golf Tournament with a $500 sponsorship for the past several years. But our best partnership and the one that we're most excited about is with the Smyrna Education Foundation. And the last few years at the Taste Event, they've sold soft drinks and water, and this past year they raised over $1,500 with no risk. In other words, what they sell, they make, and it's a good partnership. And to continue that, we would like to make a $5,000 donation tonight to the Smyrna Education Foundation on behalf of the Johnquill Festival.
Good deal. Is that the actual check in there?
Yes.
Let's pull it out and take a picture of it. Hold on, yeah, Terry, get over there.
Sit down.
Nice try.
It's not rubber, is it?
No.
Exactly, they'll take it.
The foundation, you ladies want to say anything?
Well, yeah, you can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, JRM Management.
Thank you so much, JRM. Thank you very much. They have actually made working with the Taste of Smyrna very, very easy. Seriously, they bring the drinks to us, we order ice, we actually get to make money on the ice to all the vendors as well, so it's a great partnership. Because of their donation as well as others and the work with our volunteers, we've able to give over $30,000 to the Smyrna Education, through the Smyrna Education Foundation, to all the schools. We continue to work by helping getting volunteers, and we also help them submit grants to be able to make money through the IBM Corporation as well with their grants. So we appreciate your support, and thank you.
Well, I just want to say thank you to all of you. Thank you for the support that we get. Thank you from the foundation, thank you from all the schools in Smyrna. But most importantly, our most important constituents are the children of Smyrna and the students of our schools, so thank you so much.
Thank y'all so much. And I just wanted to say, this might hurt for you guys at JRM, but it was a great festival. Of course, the weather was tremendous. We had a great Johnquill jog, everything was perfect, so we thank y'all for all y'all do and for giving back to the community. So thank y'all. Y'all can go 500 miles somewhere, and that's what y'all want to do. Todd Miller and Bill Watson, thank y'all very much. Item four, give a big hand. Item four is land issues, zoning, and annexation. We have nothing there. Item five is previous licenses. We have none. Item six is formal business. We have one item. It's A 2014-119, approval to add an addendum to include the fiber hut rate to the hut license agreement between the city of Smyrna and Google Fiber. Mr. Taylor, the background, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As you know, the city of Smyrna's been working really hard to meet the May 1st deadline for the feasibility study to become a Google Fiber City. Proud to say that we met that deadline, actually beat it by several days. But the last meeting, we actually, the mayor and council approved a hut license agreement between the city and Google Fiber, and since that was adopted, Google Fiber came back to us and asked that we go ahead and add an addendum in there to cover rental rates should they decide to locate any huts on any city property. So that's what this does, and staff does recommend approval.
Ms. Terry Nolowich, you chair the Finance Administration Committee.
Yes, this is a very exciting thing that Smyrna has been working on, and thank you to Mr. Taylor and to the rest of the staff who has been working on getting Google everything they need and also making sure that our interests are looked out for throughout this entire process. At this point, I would like to move to approve Item 6A, Item 2014-119. This is the approval to add an addendum to include the fiber hut rate to the hut license agreement between the city of Smyrna and Google Fiber.
Second.
Motion is second to approve this addendum for this hut rate for the hut license agreement with Google. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved 5-0, and Mrs. Wilkerson is out ill, and Mr. Welch may be here anytime, but he's got business that prohibited him from being here. Item seven is commercial building permits. We have none. Item eight is consent agenda. Will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Certainly. It's a pretty simple agenda tonight with only three items on it. Item A is an approval of the April 21st, 2014, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B is to award RFP 14-021 for banking services to SunTrust. And item C is to authorize the mayor to execute a Georgia Power governmental poll attachment license agreement between Georgia Power and the city of Smyrna.
With approval.
A motion.
Of approval.
And a second.
Second.
To approve the consent agenda. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 5-0. Committee reports will start tonight with Ms. Melanie Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to say thank you to Chris Addicks and Terry Graham. I don't know if you've noticed, but we have a new projector, and it's beautiful color. And at the end of last week, either Thursday or Friday, they discovered that the projector wasn't working. It was 12 years old, and normally you get about six years out of it. So Chris Addicks went to work and pulled off a miracle and ordered a projector and got it here today, and they were able to install it to have tonight. So I want to thank y'all very much. The other thing is the Vision Committee and the Steering Committee and all the almost 200 people that were involved in focus groups and interviews. We have the survey. Over 1,200 people have taken it so far, and you can go to smyrnavision.com, or you can go to the city website, and there will be a place on there to take a survey. It takes about five or 10 minutes, but if you want to add some ideas and things that you would like to see in Smyrna, it might take you a little bit longer depending on how much dialogue you put in there. But we really are wanting as many people as possible to give us their ideas and their thoughts about what you would like to see in the next 10 years in Smyrna. So I would encourage everybody to do that, and I want to thank all the people that have participated now and the ones that I hope will do that soon. And with that, I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My thing is gonna be very short this evening. I would just like to thank those who came out in the drizzling rain last week to my ward meeting. I hope you enjoyed it as much as I did. I think we all learned some things, but thank you so much for coming. Thank you, and with that, I yield.
Ms. Terry Nolowich.
Thank you, yes. And the consent agenda, the RFP for banking for the city was mentioned. I wanted to take a moment to thank staff, particularly the Finance Department and everyone else who worked on that to make sure that we are getting the best deal we can get with our banking services. It's a huge deal, and I appreciate all the work that they put into that. I also wanted to just thank everyone who came together to make the Johnquill Festival, as wonderful as it was, to echo Ms. Pritchett with encouraging everyone to take the survey themselves and to pass it on to anyone and everyone they might know to get as much breadth and depth as possible with this survey.
It's open until the 18th. I forgot.
And it's open until May 18th. This time to take the survey has been extended. There's a lot going on in Ward 3 right now. Every weekend, you can go to the farmer's market now in the parking lot of First Baptist Church. Food Truck Tuesday starts tomorrow, so you can hang up your apron, mama, because you can just drive on down to Taylor Bronner Park and get dinner there. Actually, don't drive, walk or bike, that's preferable. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Wade Lenika.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to thank the residents of the Vine's Glen, 3, 4, and 5 HOA for inviting me to speak at their annual meeting yesterday. It was good to see my friends and neighbors and enjoyed being in front of them. Also, just would like to remind the residents of Smyrna about the upcoming Memorial Day Ceremony, which will be Monday, May 26th, Memorial Day. The ceremony will be at the Veterans Memorial here in the downtown between Smyrna Hall and the library located on the Village Green. It starts at 9:30. There will be special handicap parking in the small lot behind City Hall for residents who need access close by. That'll be reserved for handicap parking and for the council. We've got two great speakers. Our first speaker is Major Ogle Westfall. She's currently a chaplain at Dobbins Air Reserve Base. I think it'll be a very interesting perspective because she was born in the Ukraine, moved to the U.S., became a citizen, first joined the U.S. Army, later transferred to the U.S. Air Force to serve several combat tours. And again, with the events going on in the Ukraine right now, I expect this is going to be a very timely talk and a very interesting perspective that will be of interest to folks. Our second speaker lives here in Cobb County, is Ranger Sergeant Tony Foster. Tony was my cadet ranger instructor when I was at Georgia Tech many years ago, and I will say that as cadets, we were in awe of that man. He's got multiple Purple Hearts, highly decorated, Silver Star. He commanded recon teams in Southeast Asia behind enemy lines, doing the real stuff. And he is the real deal. I'm very pleased that both these speakers will be able to attend and be part of our ceremony. So again, we hope to see a lot of folks there Monday, May 26th, 9:30 a.m. here on the Village Green at the Veterans Memorial. Please come, with that, I yield.
Ms. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three items. One, I want to thank both Chief Day and Chief Lee, along with Senior Planner Rusty Martin, for helping out on my recent town hall meeting at Jim and Nick's on the 22nd. I appreciate them helping me to explain what's going on with some of the projects, development projects, and then what's happening with each of their departments. I have two upcoming public meetings. One, at Whitfield Academy, they have a pending zoning application, want to give people a chance if they want to step in there to say anything about it. The school is growing, they're adding another building, so we're having an obligatory meeting on May 14 at Whitfield Academy. It's in Founder's Hall, and if you haven't been on the campus, it's worth coming down there just to see what's going on for that public meeting. It'll be at 7:30 in the evening. Then again, on May 29th, I have scheduled a tentative meeting. We're awaiting an application from the McLean Company and Brad Thompson for the project was discussed at North Cooper Lake pending his supposedly soon-to-arrive application. But I just want to give everybody a heads up enough that, as I promised when we held our public meeting at Bronner Hall, before any revision of that application comes to this council, we will have that public meeting to give everybody a chance to take a look at the plan, to query the builder and the staff, to make sure that everybody understands what's being proposed there. And then this weekend, the neighbors in Belmont Hills got together, the Plum Crest cleanup that Allegra Goodman and the team put together, that community came together to help a family where a gentleman who had lived in Smyrna for a while passed away in the house. The family living out of state wasn't able to take care of it, and these neighbors got together and chipped in their volunteer time, effort, and labor, and I appreciate what they did, and the city is going to help remove the debris that they so kindly put in the proper spot and the proper way to allow us to remove it. And the final thing is, my newsletter came out this weekend. If you did not get a copy and would like to be on the list, just contact me either through my city email address, or you can use my personal one, which is ronfennel@me, M-E, dot com. With that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Ms. Terry Taylor. Mr. Scott Cochran, City Attorney. Ms. Terry Graham. Oh, sure, no problem. Terry Graham, City Clerk, first time she spoke.
Oh, I've, can you hear me? I wanted to thank, also, thank you, Melanie, for your recognition, but I want to thank the quick action of our information systems team led by Chris Addicks for installing our projector. He was able to locate and install a new projector in a very short time, and, Your Honor, it is 2014, and we aim to please.
Are you through with your comments?
I'm through.
Thank you. We have no show call hearing, and no one has signed up for public comment about, either it's a real estate agent out there or a candidate, maybe. Is that you? I can't see, I don't know who you are. I'll give you 30 seconds if you want to tell us who you are and what you want. I'll give you 30 seconds if you want to tell us who you are and what you want.
I just came to...
No, if I'm waiting, I mean, I saw you come in, you look like somebody that I know.
My name's Cindy Jaeger, and I'm running for Cobb's List General of Cobb County. I just came out to meet you all and to meet everyone that's in the City of Smyrna. Hope you'll just give me some consideration in this election, which is presently going on, and the big day on May 20th. Again, Cindy Jaeger, running for Cobb's List General. Appreciate your vote, thank you.
And I knew I saw you somewhere. Thank you for stopping by.
Everywhere.
Just a couple of quick comments. Tonight, we recognized a number of students, volunteers, and administrative staff for the Mayor's Education Award, and that's about the, it's about our fifth or sixth year we've done that, and it really brings out a lot of good folks and people that have given back to the community. I also want to let folks know that Stan Tilton won the Arthur Bacon City Championship this past weekend, it was a two-day tournament, great weather. Stan, I think, plays a lot of golf, yeah, a lot more than I did, but it was a great turnout and a great, a great event. I'm not sure, is there anything else, any other bits to be brought forward to this body? If not, I declare this meeting adjourned at 8:10.